The pledge allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the good will of the good Lord.
John, would you assist in taking roll call?
Jamie?
President.
Clark?
Here.
John, myself is here. Jason?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
Donovan?
Okay, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I'll take a motion by Jason and was that a second by Clark?
Second, yep.
Okay. So I have a motion by Jason and a second by Clark to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Announcements, next school board meeting. The next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, August 12th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the GSL school community room 443444. Acknowledgements, are there any acknowledgements tonight?
I would just like to acknowledge our, it's summer, obviously, right? And acknowledge our custodial staff, they are working tirelessly around the school district, getting things ready for the school year. Our ground staff would like to also acknowledge our food service. You guys started today with our summer food program. And then also would like to acknowledge our bus service people, so all of our subcontracting with their service and their doing, because they have a lot of stuff to do during the summer as well. We just met with the bus driver or the bus service today too during our cabinet meeting and, you know, having all the different routes and things like that for the different summer school activities. They said things are going very, very well. So, thank you to all of them.
Any additional acknowledgements?
Okay, moving on, public input relating to agenda. First call for public input relating to the agenda?
That's you.
And a second call for public input. And a third call. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to reports and presentations. First up tonight is Chartwell's.
Hi, my name is Anya Ruhwaker. I'm the area director for Chartwell's K-12. And came tonight to join your board, so I'll give you a little year end review of Chartwell's accomplishments with you. Wanted to start off, since I'm new, with some who we are and we also have a new RVP, so I'm the area director, so you'll be seeing my face around. And then my, Siobhan Carey is our regional vice president and Jim Palladineck is still, continues to be your division vice president. Included the next slide, so you knew the two, the two newbies on your, on your team to show that we're part of the family. I myself have students in the Farmington School District who eat Chartwell's, so the food is near and dear to my heart. And Siobhan's family also eats in their district in Indiana. So for today's discussion and, I wanted to go through our accomplishments from this year, especially review the year of the free school lunches, now that they have returned, our new concept that we rolled out in your district called Global Eats, food safety, what's up next, and any Q and A you guys might have at the end. So obviously feeding the kids is our number one goal. One in six kids face food insecurity and 56% of those are nutrition deficient. So they might have access to food, but the nutrition behind it, they have limited access to. So with this year's free meals statewide, it increased your participation in your district 10%. So you, you grew 10%, you fed almost 300,000 meals this year. So it was a great year for your food program. Obviously, we work well together with this district. This, Dan Hutchison even had his lunch hero of the day up there in the upper right-hand corner. You can see where he celebrated all of the team who makes this program great in this district. And I have to say personally, I adore them. They're always so welcoming and kind to me when I come. And unless I try to help with pizzas, then that is a no-go in any way. I'm booted out real quick, she's faster than I ever could be. Still participating and doing some staff breakfasts, catering this year. Ms. Sanju had a great idea bringing the Rotary Club in for some lunches that helped increase some participation. And you still have your Wednesday morning omelet bar here with the district. That's a huge hit with the kids. In October, we had our regional chef Brandon come out to do a presentation. I didn't have a picture of him and Dan together at that presentation, so I used last year's. But Dan did Global Eats and he highlighted India. So our Global Eats program is, gives students a little taste of around the world. Especially, you know, being out in Farmington, we don't get a whole lot of choices to be anything more than the meat and potatoes. But every once in a while, it's great to venture out and try something new. So this day, we did some gran marsala and some chicken tiki masala. I was met with a little bit, but you know, the kids who liked it, they came back and they got more. It was great to offer that different kind of idea behind it. We also have Italy, Mexico, China. We just rolled out Korea and Caribbean food as well. So we're going to keep those programs going for you this upcoming school year. Little bit more on that. So obviously with Chartwell's, we take food safety quite seriously here when you're dealing with children. So all of your staff goes through serve safe. They go through culinary and nutrition compliance. We make sure that we deal with reputable suppliers. And we are up to date on all of our health code audits, health inspections. Your kitchen is amazing, the remodel, beautiful. I definitely have taken a ton of pictures of the remodel to send to other clients for ideas. The sliding shelves, especially when you have a limited space, it's fantastic. So hats off on that remodel, it was fantastic. And not only that, but they're certified in our Chartwell Safety Program, which goes a little above and beyond and more detailed for the K-12 kids. Next up, we got some hydroponic plants that we had worked with the agriculture department to start growing some lettuce. Didn't get off, got off to a rough start. Plants are tough and learning to grow plants is a new thing. So didn't quite get it there, finished up the school year. Next year, we hope that they can produce up to 25 pounds of lettuce in just one unit and serve that to the kids. That's our goal to get started in growing by November of next year. So I'm going to go back. So one of the other reasons I'm here is because you have lost your food service director, Dan. Bless him, he retired after 20 years of service. So you will be currently looking at somebody new soon. But in the meantime, I would definitely be able to answer any questions you guys have regarding your food service program. It's near and dear to my heart, like I said. Think that kids behave and handle better at school when they've got full bellies, my kids included, who skip breakfast quite regularly. They always participate better and get better test scores when they eat. Any questions you all have?
The four to farm units that you had on that slide, how many does the ag department have here at GSL?
We have one right now going and we're working on a couple others.
I'm sorry, and you said the goal was to generate 25?
Pounds of lettuce, yeah. So it should supply about, what did, Dan did the math with me. Three salad, like side salad lunches for the high school, middle school a week, if they do it right.
When you talk about suppliers, are you talking about like Cisco?
Cisco, Bix, yes, Kemp's, Prairie Farms.
Okay.
We can do a little bit of other, some local suppliers. There was, Dan was talking about that, you know, especially in Minnesota with the apple farmers and stuff like that, being able to bring some local farmers in.
I want to applaud you for, you along with Chartwell's, for the work that you do and the variety of offerings. And I like, I really, really like and appreciate how you give the kids an opportunity to explore and be exposed to some unique things in their palates, if you will. You know, besides meat and potatoes, if you will, here, here in Minnesota and in this area. I think it's good to just get them that exposure and so forth. And as we have more travel trips and things like that, it kind of extends itself well in those categories and stuff. So thank you for continuing to get feedback from the students and kind of working with the students and the staff to do some of that exploring and seeing what else there is besides just, well, I think that that really nicely adds that cultural piece to. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, No. Good feedback, thank you so much.
Any additional questions?
I think you won the contest at the Minnesota School Board Association too. Us that were there, we, we liked your selection there, so.
Our food items.
Yep.
Well, ask for the stuff shells when Italy rolls around. That seems to be one of the favorites and so is the pesto flatbread. But I think that they did offer that this year when Italy was around.
It was all good. Chartwell's has always been great to work with. They're, they're easy to approach. The conversations that Dan and I have had about different things, always willing to give things a try. And, you know, we always say this and the students, you know, will look at food, food service and food, school lunches, school lunch, that type of thing. But of course, we have perspective over what we had when we were having school lunch. And, and it is something that I think we can be proud of here because the school lunch is pretty good compared to what it was in the past. And just look forward to continuing to build that partnership because it's been a really good partnership for the, for the last several years.
What does the timeline look like with regard to replacement of Dan and having somebody in place here at GSL?
I'm screening people and I'm hoping to have everybody up and ready by the middle of August would be ideal, but obviously, who knows what kind of notice they have to give. And then there's background checks too.
Sure.
Jason, just to add to your comment a little bit about local, our local farm by Stewart, you know, that fairly large one, they do provide their products too. And I can't remember for sure if it's Bix, I think it's going, their produce goes to Bix.
It does.
And it turns around and comes back here. So that's, you know, right down the road, we're getting produce coming right, right out of Stewart, so.
Yep.
And our fresh fruit and vegetable program is like 99.9% all US grown as well. Obviously bananas are a little difficult to bring in.
Correct.
From the US, but we try to get everything else through the US.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for joining us today.
Thanks, Anya.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Ashley for the recap for the 2024 Spanish trip.
So my name is Ashley Brown and I'm one of the school teachers here at the high school. And I just returned from a trip to Costa Rica and Panama. These two joined me. We had 11 of us total, two chaperones, two adults, and then seven students. I'm not working, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to repeat the whole name?
Do I need to repeat that? Did you hear it? We're good, okay, sorry. Yeah, so we were there, Costa Rica for six days and then Panama for three days. I'll let these two introduce themselves and then they're going to share some photos.
Hi, everyone, I'm Reese Magnuson. Some of you may know me already. I graduated this year from GSL.
Hello, my name is Roy Tupa and I'm going to be a senior next year.
So these pictures are from, it's just going to be a series of pictures of a lot of the activities we did. So this is from our, I think, first and second day in Costa Rica. This was snorkeling and then the second picture was zip lining. And unfortunately, our snorkeling day was very rainy and not great weather, but we made the best of it.
In this picture, this was the day we went white rodder rafting. We split up into two groups. Reese, do you remember who you went with?
It was me and four other girls.
And I went, I went with a different group. We all had a lot of fun. The person ended up bringing watermelon and pineapple for us to eat. You had that too, right? And this picture was when we went kayaking. Everyone had to bring a partner and at some point, we even got to swim in a lake, which was very fun.
So the first picture over there is from our pineapple tour. And then the closer picture here is from our chocolate tour. These were two optional ones that weren't already included in the itinerary, but you could bring just a little bit of extra funds to pay for both of those. And these were both from Costa Rica. And we really enjoyed the tour guide from both, but specifically from the chocolate tour. He had a lot of great insight and was just a funny guy.
The picture on the right is from when we went to the Panama Canal and we got to see a movie about the history of the canal and the purpose of it, showing how important of a location it is to the general world economy. And the other picture is from when we went surfing. I was really bad at surfing. I fell over a lot of times. Do you want to talk about your surfing experience?
I loved surfing. That was the highlight of the entire trip for me, which was hard because there was a lot of fun things we did. But I've been boogie boarding before, so I had a little bit of experience and I will fully admit, I was fantastic at it, so. So these two are from different nights in Panama. Like Ms. Brown said, we had six days in Costa Rica and three days in Panama. The one on the left was at a local exchange that we were at that just had a ton of local artists and craftsmen selling all of their goods in a big hall, I guess, entertainment center. And then the picture on the right here was from our last night in Panama, which was called a folklore night. And we had the two dancers that you see and there was a couple different performances. And some of us got to participate in that, but yeah, yes, we did.
How'd you do dancing?
Amazing.
I don't want to talk about my time dancing, it was not fun.
Okay, I think we'll do a last one. So are there any other things you want to add?
I will say this, other than, you know, doing all the fun activities and meeting new people and everything, it gave me a better appreciation for what it's like for people coming from other countries, especially, you know, not English speaking originally. Because even with the two years of Spanish that I had, I found it almost impossible to converse with other people without Ms. Brown or another adult that, you know, knew Spanish. So I could just kind of see like how hard it is to build a life in a country that you're completely unfamiliar with. But yeah, I could kind of appreciate what those people went through a little bit better.
Yeah, I guess my final thoughts then, just thank you all for giving us permission to go on this trip way back two years ago when I was a new teacher at GSL and it seemed so far away to go on this trip. And it was such an amazing experience for me. This was kind of why I wanted to become a Spanish teacher. I wanted to show my students the world and just that there's so much out there than, you know, just small town Minnesota. So yeah, this was just kind of my life's goal. And so it was really exciting to finally get to do that with a great group of students here. So thank you. Any questions at all? Yeah?
Thank you for giving the opportunity to us. And we can't do it without your direct involvement, those who organize and everything. So our students enjoy ourselves as well. Thank you for doing that.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you get some sunshiney days at all or?
Oh, yeah, Panama was great. Costa Rica, a little bit rainy coffee.
I mean, it was the rainy season, but we actually, it was way more the rainy season here in Glencoe than it was. Honestly, down in Costa Rican Panama, we had really good weather considering it was rainy season. We did get some sunshine, few rainy days, but overall, not bad.
Sure.
Well, thank you for sharing your adventure with us tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to administrators and committee reports. Michelle, would you like to start us out with your business manager report?
Yeah, I've only got one thing that I wanted to mention, otherwise my items are on the agenda. And I didn't know, Chris, if you had this on yours to talk about. Chris and I had another meeting with the folks from Silver Lake, the street project that's happening up there. So we kind of, they went through where they're at on their plans. They're getting real close to having everything finalized. And I think the big thing for us was the assessment. And right now, the assessment is kind of close to what they had the last time. $86,360 is what they're looking at right now. That could change a little bit. They're still evaluating the sewer lines that come out of the school. There's currently four lines that coming out. They don't think they need all four, but they're still working on that. If that drops to just two, like they're proposing, that might save us $5,000, $7,000. They weren't sure yet on that. So that affects us. They're going to make a little bit of change in the corner of the high school, or the high school, the lakeside building, where the dumpsters sit, if you're familiar, right on that curve, the dumpsters are sit there with the gate. Part of their plan includes a sidewalk continuing from where it goes right now in front of the high school. They're going to add a sidewalk along the lakeside there. So they have to cut in to a little bit of where our dumpsters are, but it will also solve the problem of right now, the garbage truck has to come the wrong way in to get to our dumpsters and then back out. So they would like to get that so they can come the right way. So they, they're just looking at re-angling how our dumpsters sit. We would have to replace the fence after it's all said and done. So that was really the only big change that affects us, so just.
Meeting on Wednesday, the first public meeting.
Yeah.
Is Wednesday.
Yep, so if anybody's interested, that's happening on, on Wednesday. But otherwise, no big change for us. We did sign the easement paperwork because they're never, nobody can find any easement paperwork that was ever done years and years ago that gives them right of access to go on the football field where the utility lines go on that south side. So we did that piece for them. So I think that was about it on the street project, so that will be starting next year. On the easement, the cost to the district, I'm going to, you know, as it gets a little closer, work with the county and then also the city of Silver Lake. I think we'll be able to split that into two payments, but I have to see how the county is going to set that up and when it would hit the tax, the tax statements, so we can avoid paying interest. Now, if we choose to, we can make payments and pay that extra interest. I would, at this point, recommend if we could do it in two years, you'd pay, you know, $43,000 each year. So that's all I've got for right now.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. We'll move on to superintendent report.
Thank you. Obviously, July 1 is the official start of the 24-25 school year. And so we are officially started with this. LCTN update, the cooperative is dissolved as of June 30th. And so now we are with Southwest, West Central. And so far, all of our internet stuff has been working, except of course, with this little piece. But they're working, we're working with that. But from a, from a, you know, your desk standpoint, things have gone. We're still kind of working with that line from here to Silver Lake and those things. So there's nothing new to report with that, but we're still working with that area. We talked a little bit last month about the REDACT and the MOU that we need to create. I still haven't heard back from MSBA in terms of their, I think I reported to you guys that they had to have that done by June 1st or June 30th. That was the, it wasn't the MOU, it had to have the, what was it? The, the process that needed to get done, I think, was what they needed to have done. And according to MSBA, the draft MOU has gone back and forth from MSBA to Education Minnesota, back to MSBA, and now back to Education Minnesota. So I, we expect to have something this week, according to MSBA. So we'll get that worked out once we get that finished. I want to say a thank you to Dean Schwartz. If you guys walked in, the outline of the area here got a little facelift today. And so he did some work with making sure that that and all those little rocks that we used to have there, they're no longer there. Hopefully, the mulch will stay in a little bit better than the rocks. So we want to say thank you to that. Obviously, we had our summer food program start today. We had summer school start today. So there are things happening now in the building that, that make it even more busy than, than they have in, in June, even though June was pretty busy. So with that said, that's what I have. And you guys have any questions? Oh, thank you to you guys, the board, for all the work with your contracts. We have everything done in terms of all people under contract, all, all, you know, after today. And so want to say thank you to the board for, for your work in getting that stuff done.
Any committee reports for tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approve tonight's consent agenda. It was enclosure number one. Do I have a motion?
So.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second? I'll make that second. I have a motion by John and a second by myself to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none at this time. So we'll move on to new business. Action item A, meal prices for 2024-2025. This is information only. The Minnesota Free School Meals Program began July 1st, 2023. This is a permanent, is a permanently funded program written into state law. The legislation provides reimbursement for one free breakfast and lunch. Applications for the educational benefits will still need to be filled out by families for free and reduced benefits. Prices for the 2024-2025 school year are as follows. Milk will be 50 cents. Kindergarten milk will be $24 a year. Grades 1 through 6 milk will be $35 for a half year or $70 for a full year. Snack cart, grades K through 6 are $40 for a half year or $80 for a full year. Adult breakfast is $3. Adult lunch is $5.25. The adult prices are subject to change for the state and federal guidelines. After-school lunch is a dollar, or after-school snack, excuse me, is $1.85. And then there is additional charge for seconds or à la carte items. Action item B, substitute teacher pay. Superintendent Sanju recommends increasing the substitute teacher pay by $10 a day for a total of $150 per day. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Jason. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Clark. To increase pay for substitute teachers from $140 to $150 per day. Any questions or comments before we move to a vote?
This is about average, I think, around the area. I don't think we've changed it for a couple of years and so it just seems like it would be the appropriate thing to do. I know that there are districts that pay more. There are also districts that pay a little bit less and this seems to be a fair amount, even though we could give them more. There's probably, you know, a rate that you couldn't pay them sometimes enough. So we thank our substitutes. We don't have as many as we'd like, even though we are in a spot that I think that is better than in years past. But this is just something I think that is, that is important to do.
Okay, so again, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Clark to increase pay for the substitute teachers from $140 to $150 per day. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item C, approve the contracts. First contract is Superintendent Sanju and board negotiators, directors Ossleben and Luckhart, recommend approving, approving two-year contract for Tricia Mars Coordinator Business Services from July 1 through, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by John to approve the Mars Coordinator Business Service Contract for Tricia Zajcik. Her total contract was a 14.12 total with a 10.5 year one and a. Her total contract was a fourteen point one-two total with a ten point five year one and a five point five year two. As we said in last month's meeting, the district office transitioned to individual contracts from the group contract. And then this also takes into consideration the reconfiguration of some of the duties within the district office as well. So any questions or comments on that? Okay, so motion by Clark, second by John to approve the Mars Coordinator Business Service Contract for Tricia Zicek. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Contract is approved. Second contract, Superintendent Sanju and School Board Negotiators Director Oslavin and Luckhart recommend, recommend approving Mike Morris Desktop Support Specialist two-year contract from July one, twenty-twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Jason. To approve the two-year contract for Desk Support Specialist Mike Morris from July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirty. For this one was eight point two percent total with a year one was four point seven one and year two was a four point seven oh. And then this followed suit with both, total package followed suit with both the other two in the IT department. So all those in favor for approving the two-year contract for Mike from July one, twenty-twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Contract is approved. Action item D, Central Lakes College and School Contract. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the college and school contract with Central Lakes College for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Jason. To approve the college and schools contract with the Central Lake College for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five academic year. We do this annually.
Yep, this is for students that they'll allow themselves to get college credit for band and choir.
Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item E, approve the long-term facilities maintenance plan. This is enclosures number two and three. A ten-year long-term facilities maintenance plan, LTFM, must be approved by the board by July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. The LTFM plan needs to be approved yearly and submitted to MDE for approval before it can be included with the preliminary levy. The plan has been reviewed by the Facilities Committee Directors Oslavin and Lindeman, Superintendent Sanju, and Business Manager Sanders. And the rec, are, and they are recommending approval of the, of the plan. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Jamie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Clark. To adopt a resolution adopting the long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. Do we have any additional information before we go into the vote?
I can provide some comments or I can be quiet. So whichever you'd prefer, if you want more information. It's been busy, yeah, it's been busy. I know the documents you've got with the board packet are the MDE documents. So that looks a little confusing, kind of like Greek unless you really study them and understand what has to go into those. So what I gave you tonight was just a three-page document that puts our projects so you can actually see what they were, are. Because on the MDE document, you don't itemize what each project is that you're doing. So I just included a copy for you that shows everything that we did in twenty-three, twenty-four using LTFM dollars and then twenty-four, twenty-five projects, and then the start of twenty-five, twenty-six. As we've mentioned many times, between the Facility Committee and myself and Chris and John, we, John Templin, our Facility Manager, it's like, okay, put this on the project. This is something we need to look at, you know. And then we shuffle things around as things take priority over something else. We keep shuffling them around or we keep adding to the list. So like now resurfacing the parking lot. As we know, in five years, that needs to come back up on the rotation. So we've gotten a few of those things added on the rotation, you know, like the replacing of the hot water pipes. We've got a different phase going on in every year. So we know something else could come up and take the place of something. But it's, it really helps us to identify what's next on the list. So at this point, we'll start getting quotes. We've already gotten a couple quotes for projects moving into next summer, which would hit the twenty-five, twenty-six year. So just, I'm not going to go through these. You can just kind of read through them if you have further questions on them or, you know, want to know what we're really talking about, just give me a call and we can walk through that. So I don't know, Jason or Jamie, if you had any other comments from our, our projects? Yeah, as John mentioned, we've, we've been working a lot this summer. The guys have been getting a lot of things already accomplished. So that is, that is good. And if you, not that it's LTFM dollars, but if you drove by on the east side, we're putting up a pretty nice-looking greenhouse there. Everybody is really excited that we've talked to. They, it's a nice, going to be a nice structure. So we're, we're excited about that. John and I were out there this afternoon, kind of walking around, figuring out how we want to kind of landscape things when it's all said and done and where the signs should go and those type of things. So we're working on some ideas for that and we'll get some estimates on some additional concrete for that as well, so.
I have a question on the first page. There says Tangen Door Replaced. Is this Don Tangen? Do you have a door named after him or what? Is that a famous door?
Yeah, Chris can address this one better.
Yeah, it was, it was just kind of named that because the handle was low. So. Yeah, and it's been there for, and I don't know why or how, for years. And, and now the door is, now the door is normal. I mean, in terms of height.
Yeah, all I had to put on there is Tangen Door because everybody would know what we're talking about. Regarding the locker room down there, you're certainly welcome after the meeting or whenever, any day that you stop in. The epoxy floor is all done, the painting's done, lockers will go in in a couple of weeks. But it's, you see that new floor down there and you're kind of like, wow, this, this looks really nice. So it, it's.
Did they take down the center islands too in some of those?
No, we left the islands, but we added epoxy up on the, on the lips. So it, we took off that old ugly tan tile that was on there. We said, just get rid of it, let's do it right, finish it off right, so. And then we might need to do a little paint touch-up after the new lockers go in. But yeah, the flooring, flooring looks really nice, except now it makes the shower area look really bad, which we didn't address the shower area with this phase of the project. But it, it's, it's really nice.
It just shows you, right? I mean, it's never-ending. One thing leads to another and, but one step at a time.
Thank you, John. Would you assist with the roll call vote?
Please signify for or against, please.
Four.
Jamie?
Four.
Hart?
Four.
Myself? Four. Alicia?
Four. Okay, resolution passes. Action item F, award fuel bids. This was enclosure number four. Two sealed bids were received on June twenty-eighth. One was from the Glencoe Co-op Association, this providing a discount of seven cents at the pump per gallon for diesel and for gas. And the other one was from QuickTrip, a discount of fifteen cents per pump price a gallon for diesel and ten cents per pump price for, per gallon for gas. It is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanju and Business Manager Sanders to accept the bid for gas and diesel from Glencoe Co-op from July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by John and a second by Jason?
Yep.
Okay. To approve the bid for gas and diesel from the Glencoe Co-op Association. Any questions?
Michelle?
Yes.
All of us in the fleet are now gas, right?
I think, I don't think they have any diesel. I think when they presented, I think they had said that they're all converted. I could verify or stop in there sometime. So yeah, the diesel come, it's not a big deal like it used to be years ago when everything was diesel. And now when it's gas, you know, that diesel discount isn't as relevant.
And this is going to be a two-year? Now we're going to go two years?
Yeah, we're looking at two years with the possibility of longer, if, you know, if the board chooses to. Okay, let's just remove that.
Because before, we always, we were doing this every year.
Yeah.
We're going to do two years and then see what we can, okay. Perfect.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the bid for the gas and diesel from Glencoe Co-op Association, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item G, designation of official school paper. This was enclosure number five. Encloses a bid from the Herald Journal Publishing for the McLeod County Chronicle to serve as the school district's official newspaper from July one, twenty-twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Herald Journal Publishing quote is seven dollars and nine cents per column inch for legal business. Herald, Herald Journal Publishing, who has bought out McLeod County Publishing, is currently providing legal newspaper service for the school district. The quote last year was a rate of six dollars and seventy-five cents per column inch for legal business. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Clark. Do I have a second? I'll make that second. To accept the bid from the Herald Journal Publishing, Inc. for the McLeod County Chronicle through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Any questions or comments?
Do we ever track the number of articles and/or coverage that we get from the newspaper that they cover for us or that we submit to them?
I kind of, I mean, it's kind of a little bit of a wonderment that I think about as we, you know, ask or look for expectations out of any official newspaper that we would designate. It would be nice to kind of get them in more often. And that might be on us as a district, that we're not maybe inviting them in enough for academic stuff and in the classroom stuff. I mean, I think they do a great job, you know, covering the athletics and activities. But it would be nice to kind of get them an invitation or, you know, encourage them to reach out or, or touch base with the, the schools for that purpose. And then another wonderment that I have along those same lines is we used to have the honor rolls that we used to have covered. I don't know if they were submitted by us to them when it was the Chronicle or even the Enterprise for that matter back in the day. Or if that was something that they reached out and asked for. I know that we oftentimes as a district, I believe, submit the student, you know, spotlight students and things like that, the Panther Awards and, and stuff. But just the overall honor roll, I know that some school districts in the area continue to do that in their official newspaper. And I think that that's something that is really missing and it's nice to see. I think families enjoy that. I think it's very, very good acknowledgement to the academic components of our school district. I know that sometimes some of our, let's say, competitors in other school districts that we may lose students to open enrolling and/or even the parochial schools that we might lose students to, I think kind of do some focusing on their academic pieces and honor rolls. So it might be something that we look at as a district as we continue our relationship, perhaps if this vote passes for our official newspaper, that we have a conversation maybe with them about moving forward and doing something like that again. And maybe even, I don't know why it stopped, maybe it was just cost.
I'm not sure either because I thought we did have them in there.
It hasn't been in there. I think it was just this last year.
That's last year.
Yeah, we've had conversations in the past. It's been sporadic and I, I, I agree with Jamie.
I know we.
I don't see any reason why that should not be in there every trimester. It's, you know, it's something that should be in the newspaper. And I, I've talked about this with past principals as well. And then there was some philosophical differences on that. I don't know where Mr. Foss is at on that right now. But I really would strongly encourage administration and the board to get that going again.
I believe, I've had conversations with Mr. Foss on this. I think it was, it was kind of, at that time, it was more based on his decision and his philosophical, you know, how kids look at each other and how, how everyone's perceived and, and that aspect, I believe that's, but I agree with Clark on that comment that I think it was, it's more of a, a philosophical belief on how, how we look at things and how we, how kids are treating each other and everything.
So it's a continuation of a discussion we can have either with administration or administration can have that or the newspaper or whatever. But I think it's a missing academic component that we need to continue to go back to.
We do invite those.
I really, I, I think hands down, if the board gives administrative direction, put a doggone in the newspaper, I don't know why administration wouldn't do that unless you can give us some research or some real sound rationale as to why that shouldn't be in there every trimester. But I, I voice that concern privately. Certainly, it's now at the board table and I fully agree with Jamie. That's something that, that should be emphasized by the board and administration can have that discussion.
Thanks for bringing that up, Jamie.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
I was just going to say, we do, you know, reach out to the paper on events and things like that. They do get into classrooms. Maybe they don't do it as enough as what you would like, but they do. And we do reach out, we have a very good relationship with them. So with that said, I do know that they do get here as much as they possibly can. And when you look at the paper every week, there's GSL stuff in there every week. So I, I, I support them wholeheartedly.
I, I do too, and I will vote in favor of this. I don't want to give an impression prior to a vote that I'm not going to. This is the first time that we're designating them as an official newspaper. So we don't necessarily have a past relationship really with them. We had with the Chronicle. They were a, a local part of the school district newspaper. The headquarters of the journal is not in our district. We have some coverage, you're right. We have some individuals that work there that are, you know, part of our district and stuff. So I, I hope that that new relationship with the Herald Journal, if this were to pass, will continue with the relationship that we've had with past newspapers that have been local in our district.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, all those in favor to accept the bid from the Herald Journal Publishing, Inc. for the McLeod County Chronicle through June thirtieth, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item H, formal evaluation of superintendent. This happens every July. This is for information only. The school board conducted a formal evaluation of Superintendent Sanju. The personal committee directors Lemke and Bonberg will present a report on the evaluation. There is no board action that is necessary.
I don't think you were here when I passed it. So I want to make sure you get one there, if you would pass that down.
Oh, he's got one.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, okay. I didn't know if I left one there for you. I thought maybe I did, thank you. Tonight, Alicia and I met with Superintendent Sanju briefly before our board meeting to go through everyone's computations of what everyone had. We tried to use bits and pieces from everybody's viewpoint to make sure that it was a collaborative effort for Mr. Sanju. And I'd just like to read a summation of this. Each school year comes with obstacles and adjustments that need to be made on a daily basis. This past year has been no exception. Mr. Sanju led GSL in supporting our students and staff through classmates' heart surgery, a student's loss of a parent, a loss of a classmate, as well as helping celebrate the many accomplishments and triumphs of our students throughout the year. This year was filled with situations that required a great deal of collaboration, from implementing a new reading directive from the Minnesota Department of Education to an enormous amount of social situations to a possible capital project, to name a few. Mr. Sanju has demonstrated understanding, sensitivity, and empathy throughout the year in dealing with these daily occurrences. There's a key word that I would describe, Mr.
There's a key word that I would describe Mr. Sanju this year would be empathy. Empathy is the ability to take one another's perspective, to understand, feel, and possibly share and respond to their experience. Mr. Sanju has consistently shown empathy when discussing critical situations throughout this past year. Mr. Sanju has a unique ability to always have a positive outlook on life, no matter the situation. He's always looking for the good, and it's amazing how we can stay positive even during the difficult situations. His enthusiasm is contagious. In the up-and-coming years, GSL has a critical part of our infrastructure that needs to be addressed. Mr. Sanju and his staff have identified that there's, that a lot of roofs at GSL are coming to their life expectancy, end of their life expectancy. The GSL staff and Mr. Sanju have been developing a plan of how to address our district needs. In the up-and-coming months, we look forward to working with Mr. Sanju implementation, implementation of their plan. We thank you, Mr. Sanju, for another successful school year, and we look forward to another successful school year ahead. Thank you, Mr. Sanju, for this year.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Action item I, first readings of policies. It is the recommendation of the policy committee to bring back the following policies for adoption of the next school board meeting. Policy one oh one point one, name of the school district, one oh three, complaints, students, employees, parents, other person. Two oh one, legal status of the school board, four oh four, employment background checks. Five oh six, student discipline, five oh seven, corporal punishment. Five oh seven point five, school resource officers. Five fourteen, bully prohibition policy, and six twenty, credit for learning. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Jason. Do I have a second? And a second by John. To bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item J, second reading of the policies. The following policies received their first reading at the June tenth board meeting. It is the recommendation of the policy committee directors Lemke and Luckhart and the superintendent of schools to adopt the policies as listed below. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Clark. To adopt the policies listed above. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action item carries. Action item K, miscellaneous. None at this time. We'll move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by John. Do I have a second? I'll make that second. To adjourn at six fifty-two.